All right, we're going to call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting in order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Harada, will you lead us? Thank you, Mr. Harada. First up, we have citizen comments. We have two people signed up to speak. First up is Mr. Robert Wen. You have three minutes, and if you could just say your name and address, please.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Robert Wen. I'm 209 Garden View. I wanted to just read in the record what I delivered memo to the to the city secretary this morning regarding a budget for 2022. The 2023 budget, I guess it should be that we're discussing today. Our country is entering into recession and several budget items are of concern such as proposed new fire truck at $700,000. The existing vehicle is a backup and only 13 years old. This expense appears to be awarded at this time. Another concern is the proposed hiring of a quote unquote finance manager. Excuse me, based on the small size of our city, it seems imperative that the city manager handle finance matters. I did speak with the city manager rapidly before the meeting tonight, and he indicated that he does oversee the the finance and that we have a finance director that's been involved with with our city for many years and and handling the reconciliation. He's overseeing that, and that's my concern is that he would still be overseeing any accounting reconciliation type activities for the for the city. And so maybe I misunderstood the way this was presented before, but that's my concern is that our manager have ample time in his day, so to speak, to oversee finance matters because that is the critical issue for our city. And that's what I was saying is that just went on to say that if he's got too much on his plate, then perhaps privatizing some other city services such as trash and public works. Times are changing. Costs of labor skyrocketing, costs of equipment are skyrocketing. It's more difficult to hire people. It's particularly getting trained. I mean, they're more, you have to be better trained to operate the equipment today and with the latest technology. So particularly trash is a huge issue for us in particular. I don't know about everybody. I haven't been down everybody's alley, but our alley is a nightmare. We've got trash scattered on it constantly. And the newest greatest city San Antonio uses and most other cities use these large containers which do not turn over. It do not create a trash mess which which we're incurring at least in our alley, and I think several others that I've been aware of. So it's not just a sanitation problem. It's a disease problem. It's a varmint problem. I mean, you name it. It's a third world problem that we have, you know, in our beautiful city. So I think, you know, look at that from standpoint and not just sanitary and and the other issues we have with that as far as being a ice sword a mess, but I think it might save us some money as well, you know, in terms and perhaps some of our city managers' time if we can privatize those kind of services. But I'll hopefully have more information on that later on. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next up, we have Armin Babajanian. You just state your name, address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Armin Babajanian, 122 Atwater. My partner and I, first, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Good evening, everyone, city council, city manager staff, and my fellow citizens of Castle Hills. My partner and I moved to the Atwater Buckaroo area last April, and we simply love it here. We have gone to know our neighbors. They're wonderful. The mom and pop shops are so welcoming. We go to Billy at least twice a week. And we are very optimistic about the future of this community. Earlier this year, we had a wonderful opportunity to have our streets paved and updated. And let me tell you that the difference is night and day. My partner can roller skate now on the street without falling down through the cracks of the street. I can ride my bike without flipping it or getting a flat tire, not to mention my car tires particularly appreciated as well. We are very pleased with the outcome of this project to update our streets. And we can only hope that our fellow citizens in the community can also experience the same quality of life. High quality infrastructure of our roads and little or no flooding at all. When it rains is so important to our neighborhoods. I want to thank the leadership here. I want to thank the fire and police for protecting us each day. And particularly the residents of this community who welcomed us open arms into their homes, literally, to welcome us to Castle Hills. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next up, if we have nobody else to speak, we'll proceed to the consent agenda before we get.
Mayor, can I ask that the minutes be tabled till the next meeting?
Table them entirely?
All three to bring back for there's a couple that says 2021, 2021 on those. So we'll just bring them back next Tuesday night. Just for clarification purposes, the year is different, so.
Okay, so we'll postpone them.
Just a minute.
Postpone the minutes until next.
Tuesdays, council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rappley. In that case, we'll proceed to item 6.1, discussion of possible action on change.
Well, the mayor, the financials are on there. Sorry, 5.4.
Okay, so just 5.4?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll forego all the minutes and just do strictly the financials. Do you have a motion, Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda only as to 5.4 on the agenda listed tonight.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Mr. Joyce? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Next, we'll proceed to 6.1, discussion of possible action on change order number three from street improvement phase one. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This is a change order for the street improvement project. If you recall, we had two prior. And this is the third one. This change order is in regards to travertine. The original scope was going to stop at Town View. And now we, excuse me, at Twin Leaf. And so after further review during the project, it was decided between us as engineers and myself to extend it to Town View based on the condition. Instead of bringing it back in a future project, probably cost more mobilization, those kind of things. So as a result, the change order is there. This did involve additional repair of some curbs. We did do additional drainage improvements at the top of the street on Town View that's incorporated into this change order. I think expanding the drainage, correct, Mr. Harada? The drainage capacity there on Town View as part of this. And so this is the change order, and we wanted to get this approved by city council because essentially, we are closing out this project because we are finalizing the punch list.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor Council, I'd move approval of change order number three from street improvement phase one. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Thank you, Mr. May, for the second. Do we have a discussion? Okay, on approval. Unanimous. Thank you, council. Next up, we have 6.2, presentation discussion, submission of the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2023 budget. Mr. Rappley.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Council, for allowing me to provide you this submitted budget for FY 2023. I would like to say first and foremost, city council, I want to say it's obviously been a bit of a challenge. You know, last year, we were impacted by changes in our budget schedule and the proposal being submitted with COVID, and again this year with myself being and having COVID. So I appreciate councils' change from last Tuesday nights canceled meeting to allow for this budget to be presented tonight. I fully recovered, so I appreciate it. Thank you. I want to say that the proposed budget has been carefully reviewed by our team who represent each individual department to ensure the expenses have had their due diligence line item by line item as it results to service delivery from their respected departments. City council, you have a good team. Chief Zuniga, Chief Ludwig, Mr. Zamiron, Mr. Harada, Ms. Davis, Ms. Ellenek in court. Also, a big thank you to Ms. Craig, who stepped in again as our interim city secretary for her second tour of duty. Thank you, Ms. Craig. I would not be risked to mention Ms. Nora Davis, who's really stepped it up and assisted with the development of budget this year again as our fiscal officer. I would like to thank Ms. Vicky Wallace. She helps us out from consultation and technical purposes as a result, day to day sort of reconciliation, but obviously helped us in a big piece of the budget budget, which is due to tax rate implications. So I appreciate her expertise on this. Especially again, as it relates to the analysis of the tax rate component. I would also like to thank Scott Figaro, our intern. Without his assistance, I probably wouldn't have ever put this electronic document together. And I'm not going to lie, it took a while to figure out how to page through the numbering pages on the PDF electronically, so. It was a team effort, and I appreciate everyone who's worked on the proposed budget, which is the development, which has been developed and ready for submitted today to city council. I would like to thank city council for allowing me to adjust the schedule as I mentioned last week in order to deliver the budget to today. I'm delivering a balanced budget which continues to maintain our excellent service, but does not include additional requests as requests or a cola for our employees. Based on further discussions with you as council as we proceed from proposed to adoption, I am optimistic we can have further discussions in our workshops in regards to future requests, review of particular areas of salaries within the organization and including colas this year for our employees. Going back here to date, July 12th, we had our essentially our first budget workshop. We talked about preliminary revenues. We had our workshops with our departments 19th and 20th, and then originally, we were supposed to submit the budget last Tuesday night but had to cancel, cancel due to myself being out sick. And then today, we are filing, excuse me, city manager, as myself, the city manager, filed the proposed budget on August 5, 2022 to Ms. Craig in her office. Just giving an overview of what the budget looks like, we're specifically going to touch on the general fund, revenues expenditures, budget highlights, list of unfunded requests, cost of living adjustments, and then next steps moving forward. So right now, our budget is balanced at $7,557,743,000. Things to note, obviously, the basic services are maintained, current levels adequately funded, reserves to be maintained at adequate levels, protecting the city from future uncertainties. Revenues established, you know, through historical data, reasonable levels. Department program costs will be budgeted a reasonable level, which parallels with the cost of providing the services to the residents. Does not include any additional personnel. Again, we are not asking for any positions in this year's budget. Does not include a cost of living adjustment for employees. No increase to the healthcare employees. Again, I'd like to thank Ms. Davis, who worked with our broker. We were looking at probably anywhere from a 10 to 15% increase. And our broker and Ms. Davis worked with Red Blue Cross Blue Shields and was able to have a zero impact on our healthcare cost. So no cost increase. It does capture a one-time cost right now of the American Rescue Plan to provide funding for improvements to the commons and phase three fire department renovations, which close out all improvements and or renovations to the fire department facility. And then again, our fund balance reserves is actually, I think closer than now, will be closer to 4.6 million, which is almost seven months reserve, which is unheard of in most cities because usually cities only carry a three to four month balance for any uncertainties or emergencies in that case. So I would have to say, council, we have a very healthy fund balance. Total revenues proposed, $7,700,071,692 million. I've listed all of the potential or revenue incomes. Again, court income is likely to trend upward as a result of our current year, which is up from two years ago. Permit inspections due to residential commercial is up. Sanitation fund is where we've now, after two years of working to phase in a new rate, we've got it to where we want it to operate based on revenue and expenditures and allows for what we've done with dumpsters and bulk pickup, bulk collection drop off, sorry. Sales taxes up. This was actually very conservative, even though we are probably projecting to probably meet or surpass sales and use tax based on the economic activity in our city. Franchise fees pretty much are stable, and then other revenues within the budget totaling $7,771,692. The revenue for this current year, if you look at the line items, and just so you know, council, I provided a 11 by 17 large sheet there of all the departments by line item. And then the end of the back behind the capital outlay shows the final balance. And so if you look at FY 21 in our current year, we're actually trending upwards of almost 120,000 and revenue that's by the end of the year that we're in a very positive position. You know, are we projected $7,593,914 at the end of this year, which gives us almost 120,000 in new revenue by the end of the year? Expenses, $7,700,000. Let me take, let me go back real quick. So when you look at this too, because of the ad valorem collection, which we'll discuss at the next agenda item, property tax, because our ad valorem collection is going to be higher, we're going to get additional revenue based out of those values. So right now, we have $4,095,000 plugged in. And if you look at the revenue line item on there, that's because ad valorem collections are about $4,015,000. And then there's two other revenue columns for collections and delinquency that total that $4,095,000. So our expenditures are at seven, basically 7.5 million, and our revenues are projected to be 7.7. So right now, we basically have about $213,000 for additional expenditures or anything else we want to adjust towards adoption of the budget. Total expenses, again, $7,557,000. And I can go down all the line items here. Administration, 1.1. Police Department, Fire Department, 2 million. Streets, 449, 558. And then capital expenses about 210,000. The current expenditures for our current operating budget are trending towards actually being below our expenditures. So right now, we're projecting actually $6,964,186, which is probably a excess of revenue and or surplus of close to half a million dollars. If everything is projected out for the next six months by our departments and planned and expended, that's what we're kind of looking at for this current operating budget. In the areas of street and drainage, again, as we we've talked about continuously about our CAP and all the infrastructure work that's been done, we also have our street maintenance and revenue from the street maintenance sales tax, excuse me, digital billboard, and the certificates have all helped in funding and outlining the projects in the CIP. The city of Castle Hills has obviously been over the last three years, the city has effectively worked to do our due diligence on maintenance of street work. And so I think we've been to the, we're closer to 500,000 or 600,000 of the last three years we spent on the micro-surfacing of and of our streets. And next year, there's about 16 streets that we need to just seal coat, I believe, with that's an Onyx. It's actually slightly cheaper, but some streets that are in a lot better condition, we'll just be doing a simple street code on those. And so that'll catch us up to our entire maintenance just in four years. And most of Kremaria, that project, we currently don't have full funds to do the entire project, but there are some in the drainage fund if we wanted to start that project, especially related to phase one. Again, street maintenance will continue with that. And then the city identified 12 streets for reconstruction for drainage projects. And the street construction around 3.5 million and drainage, 3.5 million. Funding is required for these projects, you know. Again, we have outlined COs for 2022. But obviously, don't know the situation with those. And again, if the funds aren't there to do reconstruction, we are just going to go back to doing maintenance and some mill and overlay projects from year to year. Excuse me. Capital replacement fund for the 2023 budget includes seed, seed dollars, one-time expenditures for continuing to improve the building and specifically the chambers. Workstation upgrade, that's the next year of allocating to replace desktops here for employees, workstations. And then just some budget highlights. We put in 10,000 for a future rescue truck, 20,000 for future fire vehicle, 50,000 for public works, 15,000 set aside for future fire SCBA's. And then, of course, we've programmed in 34,000 to finish out phase three renovations to the fire department. That is appropriated out of the ARPA fund. And then 100,000 set aside for commons improvements. Again, I know there's been discussions by the Parks and Projects, eventually having a town hall meeting to discuss future improvements to the commons, like a playground and or shade structure. So right now, I've been able to program at least 100,000 into the budget from the ARPA funds, which again is no impact to the general fund. Platform fire truck payment, 82,000, and then the interest rate of 4,700. I think this is, it was a seven-year lease, and this is year five, I believe. So the next two years will pay off the platform truck. And then again, as I mentioned, no cost adjustment to the health plan. Unfunded projects. Right now, that, you know, when the chief did his presentation, we had the extra station tools, the rescue struts, the fire database software. All of these are ARPA eligible. And then Public Works was a F4, F450 field truck crew cab for Public Works, and that would be available out of the contingency fund. Right now, they're just not programmed into the budget. And then as we have future workshops, we can get into specifically ARPA, and if there's anything else we want to program into that fund to cover these projects. The, I know that the chief had mentioned fire truck and everything, but this fire truck does not have any impact right now to this budget. So I think in the future, we will have an agenda item to discuss that if council wants to proceed in the future with that. Because right now would not impact this year's or next year's budget if that were the case. So that's why it's not listed right now. This is just an outline of colas. 3%, 4%, 5%, just to give you an idea of what cost of living adjustments for the employees look like. You know, we're surveying other cities and at a future workshop here, we're going to have a list of all the cities of what they're doing for colas and or compensating employees. A lot are doing it to retain employees from leaving from their organization to other organizations, especially related to police and fire. So obviously, we'll have some pretty healthy discussion in those areas to make sure we're not only recruiting, but we're able to retain and compete for employees in the area. But right now, that'll give you an idea of what 3%, 4%, and 5% look like for our employees. And just a reminder, it's not incorporated into my salary because I don't get a cost of living adjustment. And then next steps. Next agenda item, obviously, we'll take a record vote, schedule a public hearing for August 9. That's today, obviously. Budget workshop next week. We'll probably touch on the colas, salaries, seed, and American Rescue Plan. Budget workshop, we have one scheduled for the 23rd. Right now, if everyone is available, we could probably utilize that time to discuss about the budget budget further. It's just a placeholder right now, but we'll probably have to use that meeting. And then again, budget hearing for the budget on September 6. And then on the 13th, we adopt the budget and move forward with the tax rate. Questions? Like I said, I, this is mainly concerning the general fund. As you see, you have a copy of the proposed budget in front of you, which lays out all the specific special funds. And obviously, in future workshops, we can have discussions about those if necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council, do we have any questions? Mr. Joyce?
I'd just like to offer a few comments. Mr. Rappley, thank you so much for getting this done. You and Nora and the team have done a great job. Thank you for that. You've given us a good place to start. But I'd like to to make a few comments that might suggest slightly different directions. But we'll see. We'll see what council's privilege is. But I think we need to take into account the fact that we're in a very different economic environment now than we have been. Our real estate taxes have been going up year after year after year. And this year is a tremendous increase. We've got high inflation, higher interest rates. Energy costs are going up. It's a really tough environment, I think, for our citizens. And I think balancing, I know balancing my checkbook has been a lot more difficult in the last six months or a year than it has been before that. So it seems to me, I think we should be cautious in how we we go about spending. I understand there's a lot of different things, a lot of staff issues that need to be addressed. The grass is always greener issue certainly needs to be addressed. And our citizen safety needs to be utmost in mind. But I would advocate for not assuming that we're going to take all of that increase in assessment tax, which is close to $300,000 if I'm understanding your information. I'm just wondering, given the environment we're in, if some of that might be given back to the citizens or at least not used anyway. That's one thing. But but certainly, we need to make sure that our staff salaries and packages are competitive with other cities, and we look forward to getting. I know you've talked about how there are other cities are just kind of going bonkers on what they're offering. So we need to be sensitive to that. But I think there are certain things we can probably do to more investment in mind as well, like some of the seed funds, for example, perhaps we could use some things to conserve energy. You know, what do we say, spend $45,000 a year or something on utility costs, whatever that number is. Maybe there are some things like solar panels, something that might be helpful to reduce those costs. I think we also need to invest in economic development and what that means. We're, we have some thoughts and would be happy to present that to council and the citizens very shortly. Also, I think we need to look at the impact of the certificates of obligation, should they pass in November. What what impact is that going to have on our budget and potentially the tax rate? And of course, the cola is something we need to look at. Thank you for providing that chart. That's very helpful. But the two to one retirement thing that comes up from time to time, we've been batting that around for a couple of years now. What if we decide to move forward with that, what is the impact of that on this budget? And anyway, as far as infrastructure goes, the commons improvements, to me, I see that as an investment. And having worked on that that comprehensive plan, there is wide call for improving our community facilities. And so I think that would benefit for this benefit us for a long, long time. And so anyway, I've said enough, but that those are my thoughts on the initial presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Isbrand.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I'd like to echo some of the sentiments, Mr. Joyce, maybe expound on um, a couple of them a little bit. Um, I, I think like everybody else, we're all dealing with, you know, the shock, the sticker shock, if you will, of the increase in our home appraisals and how that translates into taxation. Um, we're all dealing with a sticker shock of electric bills and how in many cases have doubled over the last couple of months. Um, some may be fortunate enough to be able to manage those. I think there are a large number of our residents who probably struggle to deal with some of these issues that are out there. Um, I'm a, in, it concerns me or, and I want to put on the table the thought that um, I believe likewise that we should be looking for ways to ease the burden on our residents while not diminishing the caliber of our essential city services that we have. And I'd like for you all to know that, and, and Mr. Rappley and I have talked about this and been going at it. It was my interest in seeing how we can actually bring forward a proposal to reduce taxes this year. Reality is, if we mess with the tax rate too much, we have the potential to hurt ourselves longer term over the next couple of years. And I think we have an obligation, always make sure that we have a good, steady foundation for councils that come after us. We did have the option, and you saw this happen with Bear County, I believe it happened with City of San Antonio too, although I'm not quite sure about San Antonio, that if we had acted, we could have put in place an exemption on a certain amount of the property tax appraisal. So we could have said, because we know there are additional revenues potentially coming in, or we know because of the impact that people are having, the economic impact that's taking place, we could have said, okay, we're going to put a threshold there of saying the first twenty thousand, thirty thousand, fifty thousand of your home appraisal will be exempt from that, which would have given everybody in the city some form of relief, which is, I believe they deserve and that we should be working towards. Unfortunately, the revelation about this came this past week and it was that July first was the deadline to do that. And it's very problematic to me that we did not know that that deadline was coming up because we could have done something to begin this discussion from coming from a different point of view. But I hope that nonetheless, we'll remember going forward that some of these options are available to us. And by the way, I think this also speaks to where our fiscal year falls on the calendar, that we probably aren't aware of some things that are opportunities for us to look at. So I hope we'll continue to move that forward. The last thing I'd say about this for, for the time being is that I think like most people, when the cost of taking care of my home and buying groceries and paying for my electric bills goes up, I don't spend more money, I spend less money on other things. And I would caution us or urge us to really look at it the same way in this budget process this year of, I believe we should be doing everything we can to hold the line on the budget, not be raising the amount of budget that we're going to spend. And irrespective of whether we have dollars coming in through the increased property appraisals or surplus from this year, I would urge us not to move forward with a sense of, I have a dime in my pocket, I need to spend it. But really be thinking about longer term, what we could be doing here. Um, I worry as well that we, or I caution as well that we really look at that ARPA money, that is one-time money and think about the best way to invest that, not just spend that. As an example, Mr. Joyce, you make the reference to um, solar panels. If those ARPA dollars could be used to put solar panels in our facilities, that would reduce our six thousand dollar a month electric bills we have here. Perhaps then the revenues or the savings from those could go to other projects like a continuing fund to support the commons or something else. There's lots of opportunity here, I think, if we think creatively on this. Um, but I really hope we won't go into this process with a budget as presented tonight, which I appreciate um, of looking at increases and we haven't even begun to talk about salaries or cost of living. And if there's one area that I hope that we will invest the dollars wisely, it will be in that. And in return, that we will look very, with a very fiscally responsible eye towards how we go through the rest of this process and develop the budget for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Esbran.
One thing uh, to note, Mayor, is that Mr. Esbran, that uh, in surveying some of the cities, I'm finding out how different various Colas are doing, but some are using um, ARPA funds to do one-time payments uh, for employees, uh, which is eligible. Um, and so that could be considered incorporated or in conjunction with um, the Colas. So I, I think again, we'll have a healthy discussion in that arena coming up.
And I think there again is an excellent, excellent example of how if we think creatively, we can fund the essential needs that we have of the city and still be sensitive to the financial impact, the financial situation that everybody in this city and elsewhere is going through right now in terms of the economy and like.
Mr. May.
Thank you, colleagues. Um, you've already mentioned many of the things. I do put a high priority on retention, the things we have to do for retention. Uh, without, you know, busting our budget, I want to retain our valued employees and how we do that um, to me is part of a larger discussion. Uh, I want to focus in on the street and drainage fund. One of the things that occurred in the last two election cycles is I got a lot of feedback from the Cremaria area. And perhaps the citizens got it wrong about what was going to be done. But the overwhelming desire was not to take down any canopy, if at all possible. And given the fact that we may not have the funds to do that Mimosa Cremaria project, can you just fill us in on the emergent need for that particular project? What is the driving force for it? And is there a possible Cremaria light option?
Well, in my understanding with that project as a whole, it's obviously to provide drainage relief from Mimosa all the way down to the outlet on West Avenue. When I let say phases, because we've looked at it um, and doing work around Cremaria through behind um, uh, I think it's the Cobb residence down to the outfall right there as phase one. The problem is over on Mimosa is where the work that was done, I guess, six or seven years ago, didn't allow for the capacity of that water that runs through there. So yards are getting flooded, uh, there's debris um, that gets trapped in there. And so the capacity is an issue for the water that conveys um, down through there. And so that would alleviate uh, flooding through that whole corridor. But there's some areas that we've been working with to get um, right of way. Um, people signing off on easements and so on. Um, but right now the choke point is um, Mimosa right there because the, the the street is so low and so much debris gets caught there. It, it should have been a larger capacity done six or seven years ago. It should have been a wider capacity and even our engineers now have said that. Um, and it's considered a choke point for some of the area right there for the water that spills out on properties. And, and just as, just councilman, the, the, I say phase one because there are drainage utility funds that we can without interrupting future debt payments out of the drainage fund to be able to start a project like that. However, the idea was to plug it into, in full construction and to do both phases out of the next round of certificates.
Thank you, Mr. May. Miss, Miss Deans.
I actually also have a comment on that. When I was block walking during this last election, I did speak to the people because that's kind of my hood right back there. Um, and there does seem to be a lot of concern with making that a big concrete channel. Um, and then uh, Jack and I have been talking about the um, the, the plan and trying to put in walking paths throughout the city and maybe connecting more of the city and figuring out a way to get it all the way to Hardburger Park. Um, and that Mimosa Cremaria path seems to be um, one of the most prominent areas to, to do that. But again, I don't think necessarily a concrete drainage channel is the best decision there. So if we don't have the money um, to start the project, could we take a little bit of time to relook at the design of that project?
Well, I think, I think that can always be looked at, but right now it's kind of been done in two phases. And um, I asked the engineers the same thing, what's better to start with phase one down on Cremaria down to the outfall or address the choke point right there. And part of that is Mimosa, because there's so much water coming across from the next street that there's so much rock and debris that gets trapped in there. And sometimes Mr. Harada and Public Works has to go out there and um, it gets obstructed. And again, the channel should be wider um, to allow that water to convey through there. Um, but I asked him the same thing, which would be better to start with? And of course, right now it's easier to start with Cremaria to address the outfall on West Avenue. Plus, we could probably, it's only impacting two property owners for getting the easement signed off, which I think both of them have, have said that they were okay with doing right now.
So that's just the Cremaria to West Avenue?
Yeah, there's one property owner who's got some issues with the right of way because it's, it's not necessarily us, it's Saws. Saws has their sewer lines in there, so they have to go further back with the sewer lines and take up more easement along people's property there. And so it's something we've been working with through Saws on the project as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
I have a couple of things. Excuse me. In our current budget for twenty-two, where did the sixty-five and why did the sixty-five thousand dollars transfer from the uh, fund into the general fund? The sixty, yeah, sixty-five thousand dollars in there.
That was for funding the traffic enforcement officer, which was done the last night of the adoption of the budget.
So we pulled that from the fund because, okay. And then the two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars.
That, that was the transfer in from the ARPA funds.
Right.
Last year to pay for um, uh, the revenue replacements, the reimbursement COVID related to our public safety, our IT infrastructure, equipment that we're uh, working on uh, getting installed and the city hall generator is all built into there.
Well, let me, let me go through this real slow. Um, couple of things here. The budget for this year twenty-two was projected at seventy-four, seven million, four hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, which included these two funds. The general, uh, the American Rescue Fund for the two ninety-seven and the other. So the actual, as I view it, the actual projected revenue would have been about seven point one million. If you take these funds out of the way, actual revenue projection would be somewhere around seven point one million. So that's obviously um, almost one hundred thousand dollars less than the um, budget.
Give or take, I would say, because if you recall, the proposed budget I submitted last year was seven point one million. And because of infusing the ARPA funds at two hundred ninety-seven, it changed to seven point four.
That's what I mean, but I'm talking about revenue. Now we'll move to the next step. To match that with your estimate of seven million, seven hundred and s- um, sixteen, seven, seventy, seven million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars for this year's revenue estimate. You don't have the American Rescue Fund and you don't have the transfer of sixty-five thousand. So basically, we're saying that you gotta go from seven point one million estimated revenue this year to seven point seven million for revenue in twenty-three. That's a big hill to climb. When you take out the two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars from the increase in property taxes, that leaves you three hundred and seventy thousand dollars added that you're estimating will come from regular sales tax. That's a big hill, in my opinion. Now.
And stepping back in that two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, a portion of that, I think it was like eighty or ninety thousand was the revenue replacement.
I understand what it was.
Yeah.
I understand what it was, but it wasn't current revenue that we expected to get, it's replacement that we used from the American Rescue Fund. That's a different situation. So I think um, Mr. Wynn was a little bit wrong. We aren't entering a recession. I believe we're in a recession. And I believe it can only get worse. Um, I hope not, but we have to prepare accordingly. We now have soaring inflation. We have home prices are starting to get the, go the other direction. So what will that do a year from now or two years from now as far as the appraisals are concerned? And the interest rates are rising faster than we've seen since the early eighties. And we still have the street issue to deal with. We we don't know what we're looking at yet. Due to that flimsy, ridiculous petition that caused the citizens, in my opinion, at least a minimum of an extra two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollars, once this is all played out. They may vote against it. They may vote for it, but we may have to piece it down. We need to make sure that we're flexible enough to be able to take care of this. I guess bottom line on this, the other thing I, I will get to here in a second is I think the chief will, uh, excuse me, fire chief will confirm that I went over about ten days ago and sat down and discussed these three trucks and the issues with him about, do we really need? Do we really need? Do we really need? And I think that's an area that we need to look at real strong. Can we make it work? Now we're talking about the, that the uh, rescue truck needs some work. Okay. Do we want to spend four hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand dollars for a new truck or do we want to spend twenty-five thousand dollars to? I, I, I don't know that. I just think we need to look at. And bottom line, where I'm coming from here, I don't care what you put it together. I know you'll do it judiciously the best way possible. But I think that this budget, I'll be about five percent less than what it currently is. And that's the first comment I have. The second comment I have is again, today during budget time is not the time, as important as it is, is not the time to start playing surveys on talking about pays and things like that. This should be done in the springtime. This should be done earlier so it can be built into the budget process. And that would put it uh, executive sessions or whatever, in like in April or, or March or whatever. Yeah. These are my opinions. And if uh, the uh, fire chief would also like to come up now and go through the three trucks again or wait till another time. Either way, but I just think these are things that we need to look at very strong. We don't know what we're looking at in, in, with the roads. I think we owe our citizens a responsibility since others didn't believe that, but I believe we owe them a responsibility to do everything we can to fix as many streets as we can and is feasible based upon the funds. And I, you know, the other thing is, let's, let's take for example, the police department. I'm just shooting at the numbers, not the, not the department. Um, last year the budget was X. The proposed budget ending, fund ending in here appears to be much less than X. But yet when you propose for two, for twenty-three, you're raising it up past what the original was, but yet we're already showing that we've been able to manage it. So it's almost like federal government budgeting. No, uh, you know, just because it's there, we gotta increase it. Uh, the proposed amounts are less, the proposed budget ends, it, you know which, which one I'm talking about. Uh, so to me, that's a place that, that, that you could start to look at and um, it's here somewhere, but anyway, you know which page I'm talking about. And uh, fire chief, I mean, the fire department, police department, uh, their proposed year-end budget is much less than what was budgeted. So that, that does not tell me that we should take what we budgeted for this year and just increase it next year. I think we need to look at what we've spent and I think they've And I think they've done a good job in controlling expenses. And I thank you for that. I gotta tell you, Rick, you're doing the yeoman's job over there too, as far as controlling expenses. Thank you. And I'm done.
Well, a couple of points, Mr. Paul, I would like to say that again, projected ending this year, we were talking about, you know, mostly some salary savings due to vacancies that's built in there. But in, in predicting or putting together the, the, the revenue, it's always done pretty fiscally conservative. Obviously between five years trends or, or just looking at it, I mean, it's never thought that, you know, arbitrarily, we decide at one percentage to put all our revenue at. And again, it's based on individual line items that accrue revenue from that standpoint, based on trends. And I would like to say on the COLA, and anytime I've submitted a budget in the last four or five years, let's give four years, I've never put in a COLA because I didn't feel like it was arbitrarily my decision to put a COLA in without getting councils.
I don't believe I spoke to COLA. I spoke to pay salary.
Understand.
Okay. I did notice that you didn't put two percent down there. You started at three.
On the COLA?
I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just, you know, we, as a council, we need to look at all the options available to us. And has been so aptly pointed out, yes, our employees are important to us, no question about it. But by the same token, do we need the extra fire truck now? Do we need to really get that? And again, we're talking about budgeting money for sinking fund. Do we really need to put more money in for this truck or that? I think it needs to be better, or I should say analyzed real hard and then come back to us because you know, those are funds that, that come out of the budget. And so I'll find that point that I was looking at. I'm sorry.
Again, I mean, when you look at departments and police, fire, public works, those are, you know, change year to year based on particular steps that, you know, an officer or firefighter or an employee in public works have based on their year of being here. So that's why there might be a difference from year to year on the salaries.
I agree, but I mean, there are, there are obviously various reasons for it that come up. But okay, here's, I found the page I'm looking at. It's page twenty-one. Page twenty-one. Let's just take the Police Department. We budgeted this year two million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, seven seventy-three. It looks like year end, again, for whatever the reasons, we're short of people, we're spending, didn't need to spend as much money here, there. It looks like we're, the year imbalance appears to be two million, four hundred and three thousand. That's a whole lot less than what was budgeted. Now, we're going to budget sixty-one thousand dollars higher than this year's budget, even though we already didn't spend three hundred thousand dollars or something approximately this year. So I think those are all the things that, that we really need to look strong at. Fire Department, same thing. We budgeted a million, nine hundred and eighty-three for twenty-two. It looks like a projected imbalance is a million, nine hundred and forty-five. But yet we're budgeting forty-six thousand dollars more. Anyway, again, I, I'm done.
Again, I, I would have to say on the Fire Department, because we are fully, we don't have any vacancies. And again, the changing of the steps, correct, steps for firefighters based on the year they've been here. Now, in the Police Department, again, that's based on having full.
I understand.
And no vacancies.
I'm just giving, I'm just reading the facts. I know the variables are what makes it happen, but these are just the facts. Jack. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Council, I've said it before, I firmly believe that we should be utilizing the recovery funds for the community. And I think that if we can figure out a way to really stretch those dollars and get multiple uses out of them, that would be prudent. I heard Councilman Isbrand and Councilman Joyce mentioned solar panels. One of the things that I've talked to Mr. Rappley about is potentially using the solar panels in the commons as a shade structure. So we could effectively get several uses out of the solar panels when it could innately provide shade for people in the commons to, it's going to offset our utility bill, which I think somebody said six thousand. Last time I saw it, Ms. Davis, it was probably about eight thousand for that's total. And there's police, fire, public works, admin, streets and, streets and signage. There's, there's quite a few and there's opportunities for us to do that. I think that proceeding with solar system, a solar system could provide long-term benefit for our city and we could carve out a portion of that money towards some of the niceties that we're looking to invest in the city to Councilman Isbrand's point. And it's my hope that we can use those ARPA dollars that way and really offset the burden to the citizens, but while still giving the citizens some of the stuff that they do want. Mr. Rappley?
No, I appreciate all the input and feedback. And as we move forward, this, we will take on other portions of the budget as we move towards adoption and you know, I don't mind myself and staff looking back at some of the line items to see if we can work within some of the numbers and maximize other areas of revenue as the funds that Mayor just mentioned to make sure we're all happy once we have adoption. You all as council, resident staff, hopefully we can find that sort of happy median that we're looking for, especially with the time of, of, of our economy and happen to adopt this budget for next year's operating.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Okay, next up we have item six point three, consider and act upon a proposed tax rate for the year twenty twenty-two. Take a record vote and schedule a public hearing on the proposed tax rate, Mr. Rappley.
You had it. Okay, thank you. So we'll go through the property tax rate calculations for twenty twenty-two as a result of what is currently proposed in the FY twenty-three budget. August second, we received the calculations from the Tax Assessor Collector County. Calculations were submitted with the budget on Friday. Tonight, we're here to discuss the tax rate, select a proposed tax rate and then take a record vote, schedule the public hearing. We've, on the calendar, we have it in for September sixth. And then of course, the adoption of the tax rate on September thirteenth. The tax rates are comprised of the, of the M and O and INS. Now that we have the certificates, we've have the INS, which was last year. And this year, we have debt obligations to pay through the property taxes, which is the street portion. It's comprised entirely of maintenance operation with an interest and seeking rate. And the city issued the certificates to pay for street and drainage. The street portion, as I said, comes out of the property tax for the INS rate. The cut, the different ones, no new, excuse me, no new revenue tax rate, which was, used to be the effective tax rate is generally equal to the total tax rate needed to raise the same amount of property tax revenue, same properties in both tax years. Voter approval rate, which was considered the rollback before, it is spent year to year, day-to-day operations, plus an extra three point five percent, previously eight percent increase for operations sufficient to pay debt in the coming year. And the de minimis rate, which was created through legislation, applies to certain taxing units, but Castle Hills qualifies. The de minimis rate is a taxing unit, no new revenue maintenance operations. The rate when it applies to a taxing rate, current value will impose the amount of tax equal to five hundred thousand and a taxing's current debt rate. Tax increases, elections for taxing units that calculated de minimis rate depend on whether the adopted tax rate is greater than or less than the voter approval tax rate and the de minimis rate itself. Last year's no new revenue tax rate, point zero four nine eight three zero one. The current tax rate that we're in right now, point five two five four four. And then the estimated, as we discussed, that's on the line item for revenue is the four million, fifteen thousand, six ninety-three. And then the difference between no new revenue and the voter approval tax rate is point zero two seven seven one three zero zero, I mean, three zero. When we look at this, the average tax value, and again, the proposal here on the tax rate is actually a slight decrease from our current year by about point zero zero two. So we're actually dropping slightly on the tax rate. However, the values have gone up, which allow for the additional ad valorem collections here. And, and I'd like to go back and say, Ms. Wallace was very helpful in putting this together because again, being the expert in this area helped work and developed these slides for me here. But looking at three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one ninety-nine for FY twenty-two, the taxes paid one thousand, eight seventy-five. Moving up for the no new revenue tax rate, it would be one thousand, nine thirty-nine, which would only be a sixty-four dollar increase to the homeowner based on the value of that home. In the voter approval tax rate, what's we're proposing here, again, based on values being increased, one thousand, eight seventy-five is what was currently being paid this year on a three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar home. And then moving up the value of three hundred and ninety, three hundred and ninety-one thousand puts us at two thousand, forty-seven, which is an increase of a hundred and seventy-two dollars for the year. Public hearing on the tax rate, obviously the required notice taxing units must hold a public hearing. Quorum of the governing body must be present for the tax rate calculation. Again, this is breaking down what our current tax rate looks for twenty-one adopted, which is point five two four eight nine nine. And then two thousand and two, what is proposed for the voter approval tax rate shows that slight decrease of point zero zero two three five. And then the tax rate in combination with M and O and INS is point five two two five four four. I know this is a little busy here, but the last page you all have here is actually this, it breaks it down and shows what the FY twenty-one is based on the no new revenue rate. And I've highlighted and read there the potential collections. If you were to go to the no new revenue rate and then down at the bottom, the sixty-four dollars impact or the voter approval rate, which is currently built in the proposed of the four million, fifteen thousand, six ninety-two, which has an impact of one seventy-two for two thousand and twenty-two under the voter approval rate. And if you see there, the de minimis rate up there, that actually has us going up to about four million, seven hundred and forty-six thousand, one seventy-one. That actually brings a, a, a negative impact on the property taxes payments. And then I think, Mr. Schnell, if that is moved there, it requires an election? Is that de minimis, moving up to the de minimis? Yes. It would require an election. Now, one thing I would like to say, and I think Mr. Joyce had asked about the capacity. Originally, we had looked at putting all of our debt, our drainage payment, and then our street payment, all in our INS, which put us up to about the five hundred and fifty thousand. That actually moved our voter approval tax rate to point four, point five six, which again, would have pushed it up about four cents on the tax rate if we would have put all of the debt in the INS instead of just paying the debt portion out of the drainage fund. So essentially that would have moved up four cents by looking at that. And I understand with our financial advisors and speaking to Ms. Wallace and the idea that, that would allow for a further capacity within the tax rate. So we don't go too far back, especially in the future for operations and our debt capacity. But right now it was the thought to stay at the voter approval tax rate at slightly below the point five two, instead of moving up the four cents right now. Any questions on this slide? Okay. Here's where Mr. Isbrand mentioned. We had this discussion here about changing our fiscal years. I'm not sure why the city has a fiscal year calendar from January first to December, but we're probably one of the only cities, I couldn't even find out as much as I tried to survey and my previous city is working in in twenty years, why the fiscal calendar is like the way it is now. But at some point, we do have to get back on course with and aligned with. It's a big, our property taxes, being able to see the entire collections for the year for our property taxes. Being in line with federal government, October first fiscal year, opportunities including federal grants, received cities, funding, grants, all of those. So ideally, what we probably do is need to put the goal in place and council decide that next year, we're going to do a nine-month budget. And that nine-month operating budget would be for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. So we run it for nine months, we do an audit, we turn around and build out the twenty twenty-five budget, starting October first, twenty twenty-three, which would end on twenty twenty-four. So I've committed to you all as council to make sure that that is going to happen as we move forward to next year. Any questions on that slide? Again, as part of the recommendation from staff and what's built into the budget currently is the voter approval rate of the point five two two five four four. This is actually a decrease. And one public hearing would be required. And I would ask Mr. Schnell to interject if necessary. I know if you decide on the voter approval tax rate, at this point, you couldn't go higher than that if voted tonight, but you could lower it by the time of adoption. Is that correct, Mr. Schnell?
The, the way I would say that, members of the council, is whatever you decide tonight as the proposed tax rate is the maximum tax rate. As Mr. Rappley just said, it is not necessarily what you ultimately adopt in September, but you cannot adopt a tax rate higher than what you proposed tonight and what's published as your proposed tax rate. You can go lower, you cannot go higher.
Thank you, Ms. Schnell. And I will go to questions. I, I thought I had a slide on here, but what we are requesting is the voter approval rate and that we, we're going to have to publish the notice, I believe, on the seventeenth. That's what on our budget calendar for the September sixth special city council meeting for the budget, excuse me, the tax hearing on the rate.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council, do we have any questions, comments? Mr. Paul?
What benefit is it for the city to go to not stay with the same tax rate as twenty twenty-one?
What benefit?
Is it to not do that? Yeah. In other words, I don't know why it's, it's minimum, but I don't know why we don't stay the same.
Because if you go above the voter approval rate.
Okay.
The VAT, as its acronym is used, then you open yourself up to a potential election. It's not automatic, but it's a potential election. So most cities that I'm familiar with are adopting a rate this cycle that is roughly the same as what Mr. Rappley is suggesting. Usually it's within a very small fraction of or at the vet, the voter approval rate, taking into account various issues that many members of this governing body talked about tonight and your concerns for citizens. One comment that Mr. Rappley did not make, but I think is relevant to this decision about a proposed tax rate is that notwithstanding one's appraised value, there is a cap on the amount of taxes that can be added to a homestead. And that's a ten percent cap. So even if someone's value went up fifteen percent, their taxes will not go up fifteen percent because of the homestead cap. for anyone whose homestead is involved. And most of our residents, our homestead residents.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul, Mr. Isbrand.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell.
Mr. Rapley, the staff's recommending the voter approved tax rate. Why is the staff not recommending the no new revenue tax rate?
Well, I think, again, I'm looking at projected revenues and expenditures. And so I was projecting that because we were going to receive additional revenue to support operations from that standpoint, knowing that what we we need for services, potentially operations and so on. I'm, again, I'm open to whatever council desires at this point. I work within whatever you provide us as the tax rate. I'm just putting this in because this is the way I put together the proposed budget based on potential revenue that's projected. Under under this case, again, I understand that the values went up, but there's no impact on the tax rate here. My concern is a little bit down the road with our financial advisors and Mr. Joyce that because we did move up on the tax rate, it might change, you know, when we talk about debt capacity. But I think right now I'm just looking at next year's budget and operating.
And I suspected that was the the case, but I just kind of want to make sure I understood that because this is based on the budget proposal that you brought us tonight. I can't help but be struck by the thought from Mr. Paul and his comment that perhaps during tight times like this, we should actually be looking at a budget reduction in the coming year. And if that were the case, then would the voter approved tax rate be needed? Or is the no new revenue tax rate acceptable to fund the city and continue our essential operations?
Again, the voter approval took us over the expenditures right now. So that does leave the revenue to be able to contend with expenditures or other expenditures related to whether that's salaries or operating expenses within the budget itself. There is a decrease, obviously, in choosing the no new revenue rate. Again, I'm proposing that to just way the develop the delta budget, knowing some of the expenses that we'll probably need. And that's just the way I put the proposed budget in. But council can choose to reduce that if necessary, which obviously will be less revenue. And we'd have to work back a little bit from a department sense on expenditures, just to balance the budget. My responsibility is to provide you a balanced budget and a identified tax rate that supports it.
Sure, and and this is not meant as a criticism, but I think it again goes back to when we look at the budget as it's proposed tonight and look at the economy, the economic conditions, the recession, inflation, whatever you want to term it. And we look at this and then we consider that we have not yet factored in COLA, any kind of salary adjustment. It makes it even more difficult, I think, to think through this and to say what it, what is realistically needed and to be able to stop there versus going high and potentially taking more of a bite than we need to.
Well, again, I think you're looking at, if you're looking at the no new revenue rate, it it from four million fifteen as potential ad valorem collection on the M and O, it drops to three point eight there. So you're talking as about $74,000 difference. So that would just take from what we are basically over in expected revenues right now to balance the budget. So reducing the two thirteen essentially. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand, Mr. Paul.
I'm okay with the staff recommendation. We just can cut back on our spending and see where we fall. And that being said, the we need to remember again, we need to do what we can to help our citizens with these streets and drainage and things. We don't know where that's going. It's too early. We don't know what where the, you know, they increased interest rates three quarters, two weeks ago, talking about doing it again next week or next couple of weeks. But the point is, the tax rate can be the same, doesn't mean we have to spend it all. Now, anything that's left over that is not put into the budget or used with the budget funding and things like that, up to $400,000 goes into streets and drainage, any surplus. So that's the positive that. So, you know, I'm good with the rate that because that really hasn't changed much.
Well, again, counsel, if it's counsel's desire to change that, as Mr. Schnell said, it can be done by adoption because you're actually lowering and not increasing what is approved right now tonight.
Do you need a motion for this, Mr. Schnell? Well, I move that we accept the staff's recommendation on tax rate.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Paul, thank you, Mr. May. Ms. Craig is going to lead us in a record vote.
Mayor, can I just ask a question, please? I'm sorry, dude. Can we have a discussion?
Discussed. Mr. Joyce, and then we'll start with Mr. Isbrand.
Okay. My request is that Mr. Rapley developed for us the no new revenue tax rate budget based on all of the assumptions you've made here, just adjusting it to that actual tax rate, the no new revenue tax rate. What would that look like? At some point, if you can do that, that would be very helpful. Thank you, before next week.
Yes, sir.
No rush. Mr. Joyce, are you good? Mr. Isbrand?
Thank you, Mr. Joyce, for an excellent suggestion. Yeah, and I would just underscore for residents who are interested that if we were to go too low now, we have no ability to recover. So if we are to go with the voter approved tax rate and with a wonderful notion like Mr. Joyce has put forward here, we still have the opportunity to come back and adjust accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. I I'm interested in seeing the no new revenue rate. I question how much we could cut. And I'm excited to, I'm interested to see what exactly that means. I don't see our departments having superfluous spending. I know Chief Lotawick still has his old truck that's has quite a bit of miles on it. I know that our police cars are not brand new, so I'm interested and I'm curious, but I also realize that I believe that our department has been doing a good job of controlling their spending and being mindful and ultimately watching after the taxpayer dollars. But I I'm interested to see what those cuts would cost us and what would cost that our first responders and our public works workers, because it's as much as we want to save some money, believe it's important that we don't cut off our nose to spite our face. So thank you, Mr. Rapley, for your work in doing that.
Well, Mayor, and I like to say that, again, it's what our department heads and staff do year round isn't just, this is a time of year to put a budget together. Putting a budget together and then actually going through the year, operating it involves, you know, some analysis and monitoring of that budget. And so they are very good in watching the dollar, looking at line items within their departments. So there there is a a monthly review and or analysis done because that's what it takes. You know, when previous city I worked in, I was a budget analysis. And it wasn't just about putting the year's budget together. It was about month to month, monitoring expenditures, revenues to figure five, align items off or on or helping that department figure out what the spending issue is or is not an issue from that standpoint. And and that's what they do. And I think in my time here, that's what we've impressed upon is actually the monitoring on a month to month basis, too.
Thank you, Ms. Rapley. If there's no further questions, I'll have Ms. Craig lead us in a roll call vote.
I believe that the motion is required to state what the tax rate is. So if we could include that in the motion.
Mr. Paul, would you mind amending?
So I'll go back, Mr. Paul. Yeah. There you go.
Which would be? Okay, I move that we accept the voter approval tax rate of point five two two five four four.
No, sir, the zero two, that's actually, that's last year. So I was just, so five two four eight nine nine.
Wait a minute, five two four eight nine nine was last year. Twenty one, wasn't it?
It's the top one. Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right, Mr. Paul, sorry, I'm.
Okay.
You're right, correct, sorry, my.
No problem. A lot of numbers here tonight.
It's been a long weekend putting all this stuff.
Yeah. All right.
Okay, so now we're ready for the roll call vote, Mayor.
Can you use your microphone so we?
Yes, the second, I'm seconding that.
Perfect, I think we're going to start at the bottom with Mr. Isbrand.
Can I ask one other question? Do we have to establish also with this the date for the public hearing?
Correct, which would be September sixth, six thirty PM at City Hall two oh nine Lemonwood.
And Mr. Isbrand, I think the public hearing was in six point four, the next agenda item.
No, that's the public hearing on the budget. So it's appropriate, Mr. Isbrand's suggestion is well made.
Oh, you're right.
Have to ask Mr. Paul and Mr. May to get, Mr. Paul will amend his motion to to adopt the proposed rate of point five two four four five five. And for a public hearing on the proposed tax rate, be held at six thirty PM at City Hall on September sixth, twenty twenty two.
Did you get my motion, Brenda?
Yes, sir.
I saw, I saw moved.
Second, Mr. May, we'll try this again for a roll call vote. Ms. Craig, go ahead.
Mayor Trevino.
Aye.
Joe Isbrand.
Aye.
Frank Paul.
Aye.
Kurt May.
Aye.
Jack Joyce.
Aye.
Beth Daines. Okay, it was unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. Craig. Next up, we have item six point four, considering act upon scheduling a public hearing on proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty two.
Thank you, Mayor, this is an item is to schedule the public hearing on the budget. We are recommending and per the calendar to have our budget hearing on September sixth, special city council meeting, six thirty PM here at two oh nine Lemonwood in our council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Mr. Schnell?
Mr. Schnell.
Although this may be the broken record that I've done the last couple of meetings, because it's a special meeting, you need a quorum of four members of the governing body, not coming, counting the mayor. So please make sure your calendars, at least four of you can be here in the room, not counting Mayor Trevino. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell.
Do we have? Should all have it on the calendar, I sent out meeting notices.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Way to be honest.
Just to make sure.
Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor and council, I would move that we schedule a public hearing for September sixth at six thirty PM in City Council Chambers at two oh nine Lemonwood for the purpose of public hearing on the proposed budget for fiscal year twenty twenty two.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce, any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Next up, we have I know six point five discussion and possible action and appointments to the crime control and prevention district chief Zuniga.
Mayor, council members. Personally, we have seven members on the crime control board. There are, last year, there were three or four new members that were voted in. For this year, we have three members that are, their their term is lapsing at the end of the month. And I've made contact with all three of these members and they, for certain reasons, they they no longer wish to continue their term or renew their term, I should say. So at present, we have three vacancies that are going to be coming up for the.
Thank you, chief, I think we have some names for you, Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor and council, I'd move the the appointment of Mr. Scott Witty to the crime control and prevention district. Mr. Witty is a resident on Iron Iron Gate. He's been in the city for a number of years and has twenty five years of distinguished service to our countries in the United States Air Force. I think it'd be an excellent member.
What is the last name, was it clear?
Witty.
Witty.
W I T T E, I believe. Thank you, Mr. Isbrand, does that require confirmation by council, Mr. Schnell?
Yes.
Second.
A second by Mr. May. All in favor of Mr. Witty? Unanimous, thank you, council. I have one that I'd like to bring forward. Her name is Valerie Molina, she's a new resident. Her husband is a San Antonio Fire Department firefighter who's been in about ten years air force. And she is an HR specialist for Toyota. Dance a good way to engage some new citizenry. So I'll put that out there. Chief?
Additionally, I don't know if it's appropriate for for the for me to suggest somebody as well or is it have to come from?
Counsel. Ask Mr. Schnell.
Anna Frey has kept me in contact with her earlier today and she was very interested in 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 serving, if considered. She's obviously partakes in a lot of the other activities around Castle Hills.
Okay. We got two names on the table.
May I ask a question on that, is Ms. Free is going to resign from her position on the architectural review committee if appointed to this?
I I don't.
I'm sorry.
You can, Mr. Schnell?
The rules for the members of the ARC are such that to be eligible to be on the architectural review committee, person may not be a member of the city council, the zoning commission or the board of adjustment. So there's no prohibition if Ms. Frey decides to stay on the ARC. It does not prohibit her from also being on the CCPD.
Okay. Perfect, do we have a motion, council? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we invite Anna Frey to appoint her to the crime control committee as well as Scott Witty.
Okay, we, I think Mr. Witty's taking care of us, but Anna Frey, as we have a motion, do we have a second? Mr. Joyce?
A second.
Perfect, do we have any discussion on favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Oh, and then we have one more, which we need a motion for it.
I'd like to make a motion to to appoint Valerie Molina to the CCPD.
Thank you, Ms. Daines, do we have a second? Mr. Isbrand, any discussion on favor? Unanimous, thank you, council.
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Thank you, chief, Mr. Schnell.
Mayor, for the record, these are two year terms, right, chief? Two year terms, this term would begin arguably September first, unless the chief needs a meeting before then. All right, so the term would begin September first and go till August thirty one of twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Mr. Schnell. Next up, we have item six point six, discussion and possible action on appointment of an alternate to the architectural review committee council. Do we have anybody that we'd like to appoint?
Mayor, I'd like to recommend Ms. Leslie Weber for an alternate to architectural review.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Schnell, does this require a second as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay, second, second by Mr. Isbrand, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Six point seven discussion, possible action and appointment of an alternate to the architectural review commission. I have one that I was saving for myself selfishly. We have Mr. Jason Smith, who has been with us almost all the time, sitting in the back quietly, listening, watching. And I'm confident that he will make a great addition to the architectural review committee and he's offered to accept. He's a local lawyer that specializes in land as well. So thank you so much for your willingness to serve. Do we have a motion for Mr. Smith? So thank you so much for your willingness to serve. Do we have a motion for Mr. Smith? Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Second.
A second by Mr. May. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Uh, next up, we have discussion of possible action and appointment of an alternate to the Parks and Projects Commission. We have another gentleman, uh, Mr. Or Dr. Vic Sylvia has offered to serve. I know that his family has long roots and he's well-educated member that is a civilian for the government, civilian employee for the government. We have a motion to entertain for Mr. Sylvia. We can move forward. Mr. Joyce.
I'll move that we appoint Dr. Vic Sylvia as an alternate to Parks and Projects Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. May. All in favor? Thank you, unanimous Council. I wanted to go ahead and uh table six point nine to the next meeting. And we will proceed to item six point ten, discussion and possible action regarding active shooter training conducted by the Castle Hills Police Department and Castle Hills Fire Department. It's no, it's everybody remembers, uh, just recently, we had the horrible situation, Uvalde, uh, where there was many lives that were lost. And immediately following that, I had some conversations with our uh department heads and asked what we could learn from this situation and what we could do better to better plan, better protect, and better equip our first responders. And Chief Zuniga mentioned that they had planned to do a scenario slash uh training. And Chief, feel free to jump in anytime if I'm if I'm wrong. But the idea was the level of training the chief wanted to do is expensive. Simply put, it requires taking some officers off duty uh so that they can be a part of the training. There's overtime, there's uh, you know, food, uh, materials. There's a lot that really goes into doing a comprehensive training that would prepare our officers even more than they already are and and firefighters. Uh, what I committed to Chief Zuniga was getting additional funding to ensure that they had the funding they need to have the best training possible. And in my mind, and Mr. Schnell will correct me if I'm wrong, uh, my hope was that we could use utilize a child safety fund, which is a fund that we've had for some time now that is more designed, in my opinion, for cities that have uh more purview over the schools, like crossing guard programs and stuff like that. Obviously, that's not something that we take care of. So there's not an opportunity for us to spend the money that way. It was my hope that we could allocate some of the money from the Child Safety Fund to put towards this training that, in my mind, would be probably one of the premier trainings in the area. And hopefully, the idea was that we may be able to extend this to some of our mutual aid partners, depending on the sizes and availability of trainings. Chief, did I miss anything?
No, sir. So I just wanted to kind of cap on that a little bit as far as uh, it's been, what, eight, ten years, I think, since the last actual scenario or that type of training was conducted here. Yes, we do our small uh shift trainings. We'll do our departmental trainings uh that we've 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 put together here and there. Um, since those, since that time, all these officers that were trained at that time, they're all gone. I think there's a three, four of us, maybe that are leftover that still uh went through that alert training back then. Uh, so now we have all these new officers that are lacking that training. Uh, you know, they're coming fresh out of the academy, and so they haven't exposed to to that type of of training. It's just whatever the academy puts them through. So that's one of the reasons, and you know, as unfortunate as it was, it's one of the reasons why we're looking at uh going through this training. What it consists of is is two days training from uh a uh alert uh program. And then, like the mayor said, our our goal is to try to set up a uh a scenario, basically a full-blown scenario of, you know, we'll have casualties and we'll have, you know, officers along fire department coming in to do rescue uh as as a training component for for the for the departments, as well as inviting uh having the neighboring agencies come in and 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 helping out as we hope that they would, you know, if we if we, hopefully, we didn't never have that. I lost my train of thought, but that that's where I was going. Uh, just basically, it's something that we need, and and you're correct. It's it's it takes a little bit of funding to get this going. Uh, we've already ordered some of our equipment. Uh, and Fire Chief uh is also uh working on 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 uh getting ready to order some stuff uh for this this training.
Thank you, Chief. One of the things I want to add, and I'll explain it so I can put it in our terms and not at a high level, uh first responder term, but part of what was an issue in Uvalde was the integration between police and fire. I think both of them are well-trained, but the idea of them working together, if there hasn't been a scenario of that size, proved to be an issue. And our hope is to put this training in place and run that real-world scenario to give them uh the experience. And I know that one of our police officers and one of our firefighters both went to an advanced training regarding the, it's called Recovery Task Force. So basically, an officer and a firefighter will get married together, and the intent is that the officer will provide cover so that the firefighter can go in and save the people that are injured in what is called a warm zone, which is not an active threat in the area, but it's still still in the day area of danger. The idea being that there's lives that could have been saved if tourniquet could have been applied and bleeding could have been minimized. And my hope is that we can ensure that our officers and our firefighters have all the training they could possibly need and ensure that if, and God forbid, it never happens, we're better prepared than we were before this. Mr. Isbrand.
Mayor, can I ask, do do we know what the balance of the Child Safety Fund is at this point?
I want to say it was around thirty thousand last time I saw. And it's been relatively stagnant at that just because there's restrictions. Mr. Rappley.
The list, I think Captain had it for expenses for what? If Council want to see that, I don't have that list with me. Yeah. Just a breakdown of what the expenditures were for the training.
Council, do we have any questions for uh any of our, yes, ma'am, Ms. Danes?
Um, if you were to receive the funding for this, how quickly would you have in mind to get it started?
So obviously, still waiting for the equipment. Like I said, we've already, Captain's already ordered some of the equipment for for our department, so we're kind of head there, but it's still taking time to to get it, you know, whatever they do, manufacture and and send it in, uh, as well as the fire department. They're uh needing, you know, like ballistic helmets and and a ballistic uh vest. So our goal is, we're we're projecting hopefully sometime towards the end of September, early October. Uh, and that's the only reason why is is just basically waiting for equipment and then the logistics, just trying to get it all together. We feel that if we rush this and just, or we're gonna do it next weekend, it's it's gonna be chaotic. It's gonna be chaotic regardless, but.
Mr. Paul.
Do we need a motion to get this into action?
I believe that we would need a motion to allocate the funds from the Child Safety Fund. And Mr. Schnell, just please correct me if I'm wrong about the allocation of the funds from there.
I think you need a motion to authorize the implementation of the um the active shooter training program and the funding for it and where the funding will come from. I thought that the amount in that fund was higher based upon what I saw in the June thirty financials in the council packet, but I can't remember what that number was. Um, and the mayor did allude in his comments as to this being a permissible use of the Child Safety Fund. Um, the mayor is right. The only thing that's absolutely required to be op paid for out of the Child Safety Fund are school crossing guards if the city offers school crossing guards, which we do not do. Since we do not offer school crossing guards, then these funds may be used for things for child safety, things for public safety, and this would fall into both of those categories. And there's three or four other specifics in the Child Safety Fund uh statute.
We have eighty eight thousand dollars shown, eighty eight.
That that's more like the number I thought I saw, Mayor.
You're welcome for the extra money, Mr.
I'm glad I asked.
Uh, Mr. Joyce.
Mayor, I move that we authorize active shooter training done by Castle Hills Police Department and Fire Departments using ten thousand eight hundred sixty two dollars from the Child Safety Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. You have a second? Uh, Ms. Danes, thank you so much. Do we have any more discussion? Mr. Isbrand.
I'm sorry, Mr. Joyce, would you restate the amount, please?
Surely, ten thousand eight hundred sixty two dollars.
Sixty two dollars?
Did I get that right, Captain?
Do you need flexibility like?
It's five bucks. Give give him up to eleven thousand.
Okay. Do you need flexibility like up to twelve or up to? I mean, or do you?
That would be great because there there are a lot of things that we, you know, again, like water, there has not been factored in. This is just equipment that was factored in.
I I would just use a ten percent contingency. Just go ahead and factor that in above what you need. So.
All right, so should we say twelve thousand? Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen would be great, but I'll settle with twelve.
Up to fifteen sounds up to fifteen. You don't have to spend it.
Okay, that's correct.
I'll restate the motion. I authorize, I said, I I move that we authorize the active shooter training conducted by Castle Hills Police and Fire Departments using an amount of not more than fifteen thousand dollars to be taken from the Child Safety Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Any more discussion? On favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you, Chief. Council, thank you all so much. As y'all well know, I don't have any children, but I think that the steps that we're taking here tonight, there are children, but the steps that we're taking here tonight is probably more than the majority of cities in the state and maybe the U S. So I applaud y'all for being forward-thinking and investing in our community. Uh, next up, we have announcements by Mayor and City Council members on items of community interest. Mr. Isbrand.
On the subject of children, uh, I'd like to remind our residents that the Castle Hills Community Organization is conducting a back-to-school supplies drive through this coming weekend. There's a box located right here in uh city offices. If residents would like to drop by some school supplies, and then they'll be collecting at the common Saturday morning between eight and ten A M. All of the supplies collected go to our two public elementary schools in Castle Hills. I encourage everyone to participate in this great effort.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Paul. Mr. May.
No comments tonight.
Mr. Joyce.
Yes, I'd just like to remind everyone that our next Castle Hills Business Association mixer is coming up on August twenty fourth uh at five thirty in the evening at Tai Topaz, and we'd love to see y'all. Thank you.
Ms. Danes.
I would also like to remind everybody, our children, uh, N E I S D goes back to school tomorrow. So um if you haven't noticed, all of those school zones, uh, all of the kids, I guess, at Castle Hills, Jackson Keller, um, Lee, they will all be in school starting tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Ms. Danes. Um, no comments from me. Thank you so much for being here. I entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
And we have a motion. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Danes. All in favor? Unanimous is eight fifteen. Meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a good evening.